To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Do I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Rotesek for item 5.1, the recognition of our National Merit Scholarship finalists.
Thank you, Susan. So, the mission of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation is to recognize and honor academically talented students across the United States. Among their specific goals is to promote a wider and deeper respect for learning in general and for exceptionally talented individuals in particular, to shine a spotlight on brilliant students and encourage the pursuit of academic excellence at all levels of education, and to stimulate increased support from individuals and organizations that wish to sponsor scholarships for outstanding scholastic talent. So, it's my pleasure tonight to welcome Mr. Hirsch to the microphone, who's going to recognize two students who are National Merit Scholarship semifinalists, and I should add that semifinalists are awarded by state, and there are 16,000 students who are awarded such distinction across the country, and we are pleased tonight to recognize the two students who represent Irvington High School.
Thank you, Dr. Rotesek, and as you sort of intimated, this is incredible. I mean, the odds of this happening, sort of like this is like a moonshot that we have two students here because New York's a pretty big deal state, right? There's a lot of people here, and so to be New York representative is really impressive. The only thing that gives me more pleasure than recognizing their great achievement is they also happen to be great people, and so they are delight to work with and having the building they had so much to our school and to our culture, and so I am thrilled to be able to honor both Josh Greenbarg and Matty Okun.
Congratulations again, and also you're welcome to stay for this whole entire meeting, but you're also welcome to leave because I imagine you have a lot to do. Speaking of students, it's now time for our Student Board of Ed Report. You might want to stay for this, but that's okay. Alright, turning over to you, Jonah.
Okay, today I'd like to start by talking about the changes in our schedule for next year. These past two weeks, I've had the opportunity to join the Scheduling Committee on their trips to Rye and Bronxville. As someone who didn't really want the schedule to change, I was pleasantly surprised. In both schools, both students and teachers were pretty positive about the different scheduling. In Rye, we observed a snake schedule where the students have the opportunity to take about six classes a day with the classes cycling between the days. It's a bit complicated to explain without many details. But for the schedule, the classes alternate start times and end times throughout the week. Say I'd have a class from 7:50 to 8:50, on the next day I'd have that same class from 8:53 to 9:53 roughly. This seems pretty positive to me because I know that in zero period, I'm pretty tired and not in the best mindset to be starting class, and the same goes for last period. People kind of want to get out of the school building, so they might not be paying attention as much. But with this, teachers would get to know students at different points in the day, meaning the time of the day would influence learning ability less. The teachers will get to see, yep, I said that. Bronxville, on the other hand, uses a block schedule with 80-minute blocks for core subjects and some shorter 40-minute blocks functioning on an even odd day schedule, similar to our A/B days. This schedule seems to be good in preparation for college and helps build independence, responsibility, and executive functioning. But the students did express that since these classes are long, they will seem long and a little bit boring at times. For both of these schools, longer periods mean longer tests. Teachers expressed that these tests do give a better representation of students' understanding material. One math teacher explained that if he has like one kind of hard thing from a subject and students would do poorly on that, then he can actually give that a harder, a harder subject more than once, just overall giving a better representation of the students because of more of a wide array of problems within the same subject, just to give, just to give more of an accurate representation of the students in case they make some computational error on a problem or it's, one is just more difficult in a way. Teachers expressed that, so since it's longer, there is more relaxed classes, they're less rushed, and there's more time for students and teachers to build relationships. Next, both of these schools have community lunches where the whole high school participates in the lunch at the same time. This is definitely a good practice, especially since some students this year have very odd lunchtimes, maybe even first period, which would be around roughly 8:30, which is too early, in my opinion, for lunch. I have lunch at about 10:00 AM this year, and I would prefer to have it later in the day. These community lunches will also be beneficial to students socially. Overall, I'm glad that we will be imposing this next year. But back to the actual scheduling part, I prefer the snake schedule to the block because, because of, I think this will be an easier transition for the students and teachers, and I could see more positives from this. The biggest factor being the switching of the start and end times for classes over the cycle. Whatever the choice the school decides to make, there will be upsides and downsides, but in all, the school will be better off. In Ryan Bronxville, students expressed how they enjoy their schedules and would not want to go back to the shorter schedules that they did experience in middle school. On another note, some students have expressed wanting to have opting out of gym for, if they have varsity sports. In fact, Rye currently has this, and the students do enjoy this and take it to their advantage. Instead of gym, the students can have a free period completing work that would not have been able to be done during sports time. Let's say if I have my, I don't play soccer, but if I had soccer later in the day and it takes about two hours of my day, otherwise if I didn't have soccer, I could be completing work during this time. But if I were to have a free period where physical education were to be, then I would be able to complete some of this classwork that otherwise would not be able to have been completed during this time reserved for sports. Basically, it would just remove some stress for students who participate in varsity sports. Next, the application deadlines for National Honor Society are coming up. Many students are rushing to get in their final community service hours and completing their applications, myself included. Also, our school theater will be putting on their production next Friday and Saturday. This will consist of four smaller plays based on the works of Edgar Allan Poe, featuring The Raven, The Fall of the House of Usher, The Pit and the Pendulum, and The Telltale Heart. I encourage all that are able to come and see it. The plays are coming along quite well and should be very entertaining to watch. Lastly, the first marking period is coming to an end. Students are finishing up their final tests and projects, ending the first quarter of our school year on a good note. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonah.
Thank you, Jonah. Okay, so last year, we made a commitment to have each of the school buildings present a piece of curriculum or courses that, or even professional development, professional learning that aligns with the portrait of a graduate. And last year, we went from our baby Bulldogs at Dowslane all the way up to our high school, and this year, we're going to go in reverse. So, we're pleased to welcome members of the high school faculty as well as some students to present to us tonight on a few of the new courses and how they align. I just do want to begin by thanking the faculty that is here for giving up their time in the evening to be here to share with the community as well as the Board of Ed, the work they are doing. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are excited to share how new courses and programs at Irvington High School are reflecting something deeper than just a curriculum change. They're representing our ongoing commitment to supporting teachers as innovators and empowering students as active and engaged learners. Each of the courses you'll see tonight grew out of collaboration, creativity, and trust. And when we encourage our educators, our teachers here, to design learning experiences that are relevant and meaningful, we create classrooms where students think critically, take risks, and see the connection between what they learn here and the world beyond our walls. The work is a direct expression of the portrait of a graduate, not as a document, but as a sort of a living guide. You're going to hear how teachers and students together are bringing these ideals to life, courage and inquiry, engagement with community, clear communication, and deep self-awareness. We hope that you'll see that our environment of support for educators is what allows this innovation to thrive. And when teachers feel trusted to create and explore, students feel inspired to do the same. And so, the first sort of new program that I'm, that we're going to introduce to you is the SEAL of Civic Readiness, and so I'm going to pass off to Nancy Fitzpatrick and Alejandro Diaz.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk and share with you what we are so excited in the Social Studies Department to bring forth to IHS. So, the Civic SEAL really is a great opportunity to just recognize the hard work that, that students have spent the last four years working towards when it comes to their social studies classes and all of their history accomplishments. They should be recognized for all of these last four years in which they've put forth great effort and really challenged themselves in several ways. The Civic SEAL is not only just a recognition for the students, but also another way that the students can have a pathway towards graduation.
To achieve the SEAL, students need a total of six points in the two different categories, which are civic knowledge and civic participation. In the civic knowledge category, we have things, items such as credits in social studies, mastery or proficiency on social studies regents exams, advanced coursework, and research projects. Within the civic participation category, we have high school civics project, service learning projects, and extracurricular participation or work-based experience. Some reasons that students might want to earn the SEAL are, one, it's a formal recognition of their commitment to civic knowledge and civic engagement. It reflects an understanding of how civic engagement, mindset, and scholarship strengthen school communities and society as a whole. And it demonstrates to colleges, universities, and prospective employers that the student possesses the skills and dispositions essential for active civic participation.
One of the main reasons why the Civic SEAL is so great is that it aligns pretty well with Portrait of a Graduate. So, of course, you're going to have courageous learners. More significantly, it goes hand in hand with the engaged citizenship because they are forced to participate in community and even at large, not just local. Some students have even shared with, with us like study abroad trips and community service, just well outside of Irvington. And of course, effective communicators because they do have to sit and present in front of a panel, which they're training all these four years in social studies classes for. And then lastly, this idea of self-aware individual where students are actually doing it by themselves and with, of course, guidance from Ms. Fitzpatrick and I, but they have the opportunity to really reflect on these last four years and all of the accomplishments that they've done.
So, we asked students to reflect a bit on what they've learned from civic experiences or what they can learn from future civic experiences, and we have just two quotes here from students. The first one from Clara Stern. She noted that even though she's only a junior in high school, she really has an opportunity to impact her community. Through the SEAL, students are empowered to take action on issues they care about, lead initiatives in their school and community, and see how their ideas can inspire change.
And then we'd also like to share Iris Small, who goes on to say, "For me, even though I'm not a major player in my community or country as a whole, we all have the ability to participate and examine the past and look to the future," which I think encompasses the Civic SEAL really well.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lila Katz. I teach Latin, Instructional Lab, and World Mythology, the new elective course offered by the World Languages Department. So, World Mythology is a semester-long course that offers an interdisciplinary, cross-cultural approach to studying myth. The units are structured thematically around a specific theme or topic. So, for example, Creation Myths or Heroes and Tricksters Unit, which is different from other mythology classes, which are structured more around geographical areas. Instead, we are looking at the themes of these different myths from multiple cultures. And it allows students to explore and compare these myths from a wide range of world cultures. We analyze these myths as both literary and historical works, examining how they are grounded in their unique cultural settings and serve as products of the cultures that created them. And lastly, this course also investigates how myths continue to influence our modern storytelling today in books, movies, comics, and television, and that will be the last unit that we work on together. Here are some essential questions that we looked at particularly in our first unit, What is Myth? And because this course also places a strong emphasis on writing, students regularly engage in journal prompts and free writes to reflect on these essential questions, make connections, and engage more deeply with the myths. And I have to say that I've been working in tandem with some faculty members from the English Department and Sarah Rush on the Bard writing practices, and we've been implementing those in this course. Through its exploration of world mythologies across a wide range of cultures, World Mythology reflects all four criteria of Irvington's Portrait of a Graduate. So, through the courageous learner, this course invites students to explore mythologies from diverse world cultures, engaged citizens, studying myths from around the world, and identifying common themes across cultures, and effective communicator through, that's okay, through their writing, discussion, and presentation, and a self-aware individual because we are looking at these universal human themes through these myths. And last, I provide an example of an assessment task in our first unit, What is Myth? This task was called Transform the Tale. So, for this task, students selected one story and rewrote it in three different forms, myth, legend, and folk tale, to demonstrate their understanding of the characteristics and distinctions between the genres. And this assessment provided students with the opportunity to showcase their creativity while demonstrating a deeper understanding of these different genres. I don't know if it's possible, but I did include a link to student work on the Padlet. I don't know. Yeah. Yay, Padlet. So, students had to rewrite the myth or story or folk tale in two different genres, and they each chose one to post on the Padlet and did a digital gallery walk to celebrate their work. And of course, they included a drawing as well. Okay, thank you so much. So, yeah, thank you, everyone, for your time and attention this evening.
The next course that we're going to talk about is AP Seminar. The two teachers, Ms. Lantinium is Grant. You see the animation? We're not able to come tonight, so I'll speak a little bit about the course, and then we have some real experts who will actually tell you how, how it plays out. AP Seminar is an AP course, but unlike other AP courses, it is not about mastery of a specific set of content. It is not trying to take, you know, sort of 10 pounds of knowledge and put it into a five-pound bag. Rather, it's about fostering skill development, critical thinking, research, collaboration, and presentation skills. It's open right now to sophomores and juniors. There is a part two to this course that next year, this year, this sits in the English Department. Next year, students who continue, who choose to continue will move on to AP Research, which is more individual research projects that will be housed within our Social Studies Department. So, it's also a foray into interdisciplinary work. Students choose AP Seminar as opposed to a traditional lit course because it encourages intellectual curiosity, it's more college-level kind of research, and it incorporates voice and choice. And so, I think you'll hear about some of the projects that students have been working on so far this year. So, they are writing a research report, creating group multimedia presentations, conducting independent research on the topic of personal interest. They're going to craft and defend a written research-based argument through a formal presentation, and then complete a written exam demonstrating analysis, evaluation, and synthesis skills. And like other AP courses, this will ultimately be evaluated by the College Board, and students can earn AP credits. Some of the students, oh, let's see, I'm going to have to read off the paper for this. Some of the students, when surveyed by their teachers, when they were asked, "Why are, why are they taking this course?" Some said they wanted to become better presenters and gain confidence. Other students talked about, again, strengthening skills and gaining individual insights. And rather than me continuing to read off a slide, why don't I pass it to our, I think, Ms. Ross, do you want to introduce our students?
So, we want to say a huge thank you again to our three students who are here with us tonight. We have three juniors, Dahlia, Shrutiqa, and Chloe, and they're going to speak in turn about what excites them about this course and some of the connections to the Portrait of the Graduate.
Hi, I just want to say thank you all for this opportunity. And last year, when my ELA teacher said that there was going to be a new course, I immediately was really excited because for me, ELA has never been something, again, that really did excite me. But when I found out that this new AP Seminar course was something that included a lot of research, I was excited because I am in our high school science research program. And so, I saw this as a new opportunity for me to focus on this research and expanding my abilities. And pretty much immediately, when we got into class, within the first week, we were already in different groups and working on presentations, which I was really pleased with because it showed how active that all the students were going to be in this class. And it also taught me how to be a more effective communicator with the other students in my class. And since it's combined with juniors and sophomores, I think that it's a really good way for you to meet new people and make new connections. And then I also really appreciate how I think all students can build their presentation skills. And then also with the teacher meetings, it helps students learn how to ask questions and really reflect on themselves and their own work and make sure that they are carrying themselves on their right path. And one more connection to the Portrait of a Graduate, it requires us to be in tune with global situations, social situations, and you really have to do the research and put effort into learning about these things, which I think is a very important part of being a well-rounded graduate.
Um, I started, I didn't really take AP Seminar, like I took it, but like a week after, first I took like, first I took AP Lang, thinking AP Seminar was going to be like really hard and like a no fun zone. Um, but like, that, that's not true. Um, so, once I got into AP Seminar, I realized that like, I, I wanted to take it so that I could become a better of like a communicator. And like, right now, I'm not even confident at all. Um, and I, I really don't like talking in front of people, but like, AP Seminar really like helped build my confidence, and like, it really helped me, I don't know, share my ideas and perspectives of what I think and not what others think and like.
For me, I've always loved English, but one thing I've noticed is that when we do like a research, it's kind of shortened. It's in like one small unit. So, when I heard AP Seminar, I was really excited because it was a chance to expand like research, not only individually, but as a group. I think it's very helpful socially because you get to experience things with other people. You get to compare your work and everything, as well as build your own skills in researching and learning to take effective notes and using proper evidence as well as finding like credible sources. And next in the Portrait of a Graduate, you learn from other students. Like, you ask them about their work, and they help you with yours, and they help you refine it in a criticizing way.
Next, we're going to talk about a course, Financial Literacy, that the genesis from this, actually, it was in part beside students demanding it. It came out of a conversation with the Board of Education, wondered, "Why don't we have a financial literacy course?" And boy, that was a great question. So, really happy. Thank you. You guys are great. Thank you. And so, I'm happy to pass the mic to Anthony Di Benedetto and Nancy Fitzpatrick.
My name is Anthony Di Benedetto. I'm a math teacher at Irvington High School. I'm excited to talk about the new Financial Literacy class that we're offering to juniors and seniors. Some of the topics include behavioral economics, paying for college, banking, investing, types of credit, and managing credit. We've already, just, we just completed the paying for college. We did the behavioral economics. We're starting the, the banking unit this week. The connection to Portrait of a Graduate is by far the courageous learner. Students are thinking critically and analyzing financial data and concepts from various sources. For example, one source is students were asked to use an online tuition tracker, where they had to compare the sticker price to the net price of college based upon household income, and they did various analysis off of the four colleges that they selected. They also were engaged in analyzing sample financial aid packages. So, they had to go through the financial aid package that was presented and then identify what aid was offered, such as Pell Grants, loans, where they subsidize, where they unsubsidize. They then had to compare that financial aid package to another one, which was presented differently. And that's kind of what happens when they get their financial aid offer letters in the spring. They're going to have different types of financial aid offer letters, and they're going to have to hunt and pack to find out where the data is, where are the loans, where are the financial aid that's being offered? So, they did that analysis. It's also connected to courageous learner by demonstrating flexible problem-solving skills. So, for example, we did, we started the class by doing a bean game, where students had 20 beans, which was their income, and they had to allocate those 20 beans among categories such as clothing, transportation, food, housing. So, they, each category had options. So, for example, the clothing category could have where your current wardrobe, no beans, but you can buy designer clothes, four beans. So, they had to go ahead and allocate all the beans, the 20 beans, among those categories. To the extent that there was any leftover, they had discretionary spending. So, they would allocate it perhaps to gifts and donations, or to savings, or to recreation activities. After that was done, which took a while for them to figure out where they wanted to allocate the beans, they then were tasked with the fact that they had a salary decrease. So, they had to remove seven beans from their 20 beans, and they had to figure out where to remove those beans from. So, that was a problem-solving skill that the students engaged in. Its connection, the next one, connection to effective communicator is they express ideas clearly in classroom discussions. So, we had an activity where, it was called the Four Corners Activity, where there were statements given, money statements, and students had to say whether they strongly agreed, strongly disagreed, mildly agreed, or mildly disagreed, and put themselves in one of the corners. The students had wonderful sharing of ideas, why they felt the way they did on certain money statements, and it fostered a wonderful discussion, and they respectively viewed each other's points of view. They did a really good job with their discussions and why they felt the way they did. Another way it effect, as an effective communicator is through anal, analysis of charts and graphs and infographics. So, they have to interpret financial information through these charts and kind of communicate what the charts and the graphs are displaying.
So, this course also allows us to build self-awareness in our students.
We want to make sure that they have the knowledge and confidence to make financial decisions. And we want to push them away from making financial decisions based on maybe the influence of friends or social media influencers and more built upon that knowledge that they're gaining in class. And finally, we have our engaged citizen. We're really trying to teach our students to be digitally responsible. So in speaking about the FAFSA forms, we talk to them about data privacy and how important that is when you're disclosing financial information. And we're also teaching them in the banking unit about online banking and how to avoid scams and phishing attempts.
So we, we asked the students to reflect on both units. The Behavioral Economics Unit was reflecting, asked them to answer one insight that they learned about how people make financial decisions. And this, these are the two students' responses. And the key in the first response is that this makes me realize I should pause and think before spending, stick to a budget and focus on my priorities so I don't make impulsive decisions, which was a wonderful takeaway from that whole behavioral economics section. The other student also talked about emotions and how they can cloud judgments. And his last sentence was wonderful. It said, "In my future, I will think more about how my financial decisions impacts my life beyond my emotions, putting my needs before my wants," which also reiterated what we did in the Bean Game.
We also asked them to reflect on the paying for college unit. And students shared that they learned a lot about loans. We taught them the difference between federal loans and private loans and how there's really different payback requirements for those two types of loans. And also, they reflected on how you should be accepting grants and scholarships before you would look into taking loans because you want to take the free money before you take money that you have to pay back.
I'm going to stand up if you guys don't mind. Hi, my name is Skylar Mosenthal. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I teach biology, this new course Anatomy Physiology, once in a while some Earth Science. I get to coach the modified cross-country team, so we had a meet today, so. I want to talk a little bit about anatomy and phys, and I just want to also thank this district and the board, like indirectly. It's because of the summer work we get to do that all of these courses have come about. It's just awesome that we get to create courses and studies for students that we are super passionate about. And we are super excited to get in the classroom. I think it's an awesome demonstration that like we are being effective communicators. We are being effective self-aware individual, like all of, all the Portrait of a Graduate. We get to embody it a little bit more because we're pumped to step into these classes every day. So I just want to thank you guys real quick. Anatomy Physiology, this is epitomizing this STEM-based inquiry-driven curriculum that was developed over the course of two summers. The idea of it was to provide for a little bit of a deep dive into some medical field-type experiences for students who might be interested in going in a range of directions that, that the medical field offers. It's based on 21st century skills, which is the Portrait of a Graduate. That's, they're synonymous, basically. We're talking self-aware individual, effective communicator, courageous learning. All of that is 21st century skills. It's hands-on and it's authentic assessment. So you might think of Anatomy Physiology of just, let's just memorize a bunch of stuff and regurgitate it back out. Nope, nope, nope. I'm going to show you a couple of things right now that we're working on. They have to use charts, diagrams or models in order to explain what's happening with the body. And this is where we say the critical thinking. So right, here you go. Here's Anatomy Phys. So here's all the planes, directionality. We have terminology of the body. And sure, we need to learn this, but they get these diagrams. They can just have the diagram and then they need to use it to then make decisions or critically think about what might be happening with a particular individual. And to get them to learn these diagrams, the first week of class, I throw them these terms that they've never seen before. And I say, "We're going to dissect a banana." And the only terms that you're allowed to use are these crazy terms that doctors use all the time. And so they then have to work together. They create like some faces on the banana. And then the terms will be super specific. They'll say, "Make a transverse incision superior to the abdomen, inferior to the shoulders, lateral to the navel and paris agital compared to the hip flexor." And that's a whole lot of mouthful, right? But that's what a surgeon would be doing and following those particular directions. And so when they get tossed in, they, first they freeze and they have no idea what to do. And I love that because that is the epitome of courage. When you get thrown into something where you have no idea what's going on. And then they start working collaboratively. They're like, okay, let's look at the chart. And I'm like, well, what did your partner say? Have you looked at the diagram? And they start working on it. These bananas kind of, we take three days to do this. So by the end, the bananas are a little bit worse for the wearer, but you can see like they go after it and they work in pairs. So they're, they're effective communicators, right? I asked them, I say, "Once you've made an incision, you have to hand the scalpel over to your partner to let them work on it." So here you see, they're doing, these are sagittal incisions. They performed some transverse incisions. This is actually last, last year's course. And they're filling out a whole bunch of modeling as they're going along to capture what they're seeing in the inside of the banana and talking about some of the structures. And then what better way to assess this? I could give them a paper-based test, but I have a whole collection of Beanie Babies at home from when I was like 10 years old. And I say, I'm give these directions. We, we study a whole bunch and I say, "You're going to have a lab practical. It's not going to be multiple choice. It's not going to be pencil and paper. I'm going to give you eight stickers and I'm going to give you directions. And I'm going to say on the Beanie Baby, on the posterior side, et cetera, like using all these terms, put a sticker on that point." And they, this year, they had to get a little creative because they had to take pictures with their Chromebooks instead of their phones. But last year, they took pictures and then they would, they would send me this and say, "This is where we think the sticker should go." They loved this. They asked if they could do it again with a different Beanie Baby because like someone really wanted the crocodile instead of the hippo or whatever. So it's, it's kind of like this applied learning. Then moving into the medical field, so we, we practiced, once they know all the terminology, we are practicing actual surgical sutures here. These are simple interrupted sutures. We watched several videos from different, these are, these are like college and/or beyond college, like specific medical training videos that I go online and watch because I'm just kind of curious what it looks like to be a surgeon. But this, these are videos that someone would be watching in a training course. And then when they go on, they, they look at the videos and these are actual surgical needles. You can see the hooked, the hooked needle right there. That is called a needle driver that they're holding it with. And then they also have the forcep and the scalpel. And then they are doing the, without actually touching the specimen, because surgeons don't actually touch the skin because you have an infection. They're going through and doing all this, so. So what's the point of all this? A, they're getting, they're getting like a cool look at what's going on in terms of like actual medical field. We've also done a research project already with homeostatic responses. They got to see one. If you ever get a chance to do something with like kids or grandkids, get winter greens, go into a very dark room, turn off all the lights and then open your lips so that you can see your teeth and crunch down on the winter green. It'll create sparks. There's a whole chemical reaction in there, which we can talk about at some point. But the reason why you can see the spark is because of a chemical in your eye called rhodopsin, without which you wouldn't be able to see anything in the, in the dark. So we say, "What an interesting homeostatic response." What are you interested in, what the body can do? And they start thinking about like caffeine is one of my favorite ones because they're coming in, drinking some caffeinated beverages, someone did creatine, what's the response to that? And they do these research projects and then present, just like they were talking about in some of these other classes, in front of their peers. And I make them go the extra step and say, "Not only do you have to present, I want you to ask at least six questions to other kids who are presenting." And you don't get the full points unless you ask questions back because this is a dialogue. We want you to learn from each other. So it's all these experiences where they're going after something they're interested, doing hands-on work, reflecting on it and getting exposed to content that I think brings the Portrait of a Graduate to life, especially when we ask them to do real-life, real scenario-based things where they have to work together and think critically. I know I've talked a little bit over. One last slide here. Cool. Thank you.
So thank you so much to everyone for sharing. I want to just kind of speak to two main things that really unite these courses and initiative, the initiative of the Seal of Bileiteracy, or Seal of Bileiteracy, the Seal of Civic Readiness also. But one is the connection, the rich connections to the Portrait of the Graduate, all four components of it that I think was explained beautifully by our staff members and by our students and is very apparent. And I wish Shruti Kaa was still here to hear me say this. I'll say it to her tomorrow. But I think the fact that she sat here and said, "I'm so nervous. I don't like speaking in front of groups." And yet, when Ms. Lantini asked for student volunteers, she was one of the three students who volunteered to be here tonight. It's such a testament to how the students are really living the Portrait of the Graduate through these new courses. The second thing that unites them all, and John touched on this at the beginning, is that these, where these courses really came from was, and also the SEAL initiative, is because of student interest and because of the passion of our staff members. And so when we think about, like Skylar saying, for example, that course coming from because students are interested in that field or AP Seminar, because we wanted a home for students to really be able to dive into authentic research. These courses are really student-driven and led by their voice. And again, brought to life by the dedication of you all. And we are incredibly excited to bring that into the future with whatever new schedule, Jonah, we take, whatever that schedule looks like, and to have even more time to delve into the portrait and also to continue to listen to our staff and our students about what interests them next. So thank you very much.
No, that's all. Unless you have questions for us.
That was tremendous. Thank you very much for coming and sharing. And I would hope to thank the students too, who left rather promptly. I'll go down the line. Trustees, questions, comments?
That was great. It's really exciting. I think all children going to college should do Financial Literacy. And I think maybe I should do it too. I had a question about the Seal of Civic Readiness. Are all students eligible to, to do that? Like, how does that?
So right now, we're focusing on juniors.
But it's open enrollment, like anybody who wants to can do it.
Yes, absolutely. We have some really healthy numbers. It was actually, I've taught most of them. So seeing how excited they were once we brought this to them was really just a joy for me. But yes, it is open to just juniors for the moment, but anyway.
Great. Thank you.
Can I just add to that, you know, what, what the state is doing, the moves they're making with the Portrait of a Graduate, this SEAL and, and as well as the Seal of Bileiteracy are sort of models for them as they continue to explore. You know, the state is still going to offer Regents exams, but they're going to open up the criteria for graduation to allow more for this type of assessment as opposed to Regents, which I think, as you can see, opens up a lot of space in the curriculum as well. So with our own Portrait of a Graduate, we're sort of aligned in this way to explore the options the state is going to put on the table and assessment that looks a little bit different and in some ways better serves our students.
Thank you so much. This was great. I have a question about AP Seminar. I'm wondering if you could share some examples of what kind of research topics the students are working on.
Yeah, so, so far this year, the, the teachers are, have chosen as a unifying theme borders. There's so many places you can go. One of the things that students in Ms. Lantini's section have been doing is diving into the different social media platforms. What is, what are, what's allowed on them, what's not allowed them, what are the populations that tend towards them? Where are the sort of boundaries and borders around those? And students, again, that was all inquiry-driven, student research-driven and then group presentation. There was another unit where students chose photographs that were just, that just kind of struck them. And then had to do research, you know, what, what's both in this image, what's not in this image? What's the story this image is trying to tell? Which was actually, I got to pop in and heard this like really provocative conversation about what's the obligation of workspaces for nursing parents? And they turned to me and said, "Well, what do we do?" And I was able to say, "Well, thankfully, we have the space that our facilities team was able to create for people." So it became like this real-world kind of conversation that doesn't just happen in, in most high schools.
Thank you. Just to understand the enrollment numbers for each of the classes?
So, oh, you have them right there?
So AP Seminar, we're current, we have three sections and a total of 55 students. Mythology, we're starting off with one section that has seven students in it. Financial Literacy has two sections with 24 students and Anatomy has one section with 22 students. So all told, about a quarter of our students are accessing one new opportunity.
Thank you.
Just want to thank everyone for the presentation. I found it really helpful.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your enthusiasm and, and putting forward some ideas that you're really passionate about and it shows in the students.
No, thank you for coming and thank you for your enthusiasm. I know Jonah has a ton of questions, so I'm going to give it to him.
I do not have a ton of questions.
Well played, Jonah. Thank you all again. I want to say that in all the surveys that we've done recently, it seems like the need for real-world connections always comes up. And this is proof that we're listening and trying to do that. And it sounds like it's working in terms of getting, those enrollment numbers are very strong and finding points of connection. That sounds super cool. Thank you very much. We're good. You two are welcome to stay for the meeting or go home, whatever you would like. Thank you again. Good night. We're moving on to our first community comment period. This is for items that appear on the agenda if anyone would like to make a comment. Hearing known, I will move on to policy. So tonight, we are doing a second read and adoption of our age of entrance policy. I will turn that over to the Policy Committee for discussion.
Okay, I can do that. So the first policy is 5140, which is the age of entrance policy. This is the second read. There's been a change to the policy since the first read. Initially, the Policy Committee had recommended changing the cutoff to December 1st. We've, after discussion and feedback, the committee has recommended reverting it to December 31st. So essentially, the policy reads now that students must be five years of age on or before December 31st of the year of enrollment for kindergarten. And students who turn six years of age on or before December 31st of the enrollment year will be placed in first grade. And there is an exemption for this year, obviously, and for the next school year. And the rationale for clarifying this policy, as we've discussed before, was to align practice with policy.
So, from trustees, questions or comments?
I guess I have just one comment, if this is the appropriate time. I do agree with the Policy Committee that we need a clearly written policy. It's been 17 years. And even though our policy did not allow delayed entry and the administration would encourage parents that requested delayed enrollment to, to enroll in a timely, in their calendar year, parents were permitted delayed entry without exception, or at least as far as we know. As the community post-COVID has become known for this, unfortunately, we are seeing a rise in the amount of children that are entering this delayed cohort. And that's why I agree that we definitively need a line. Where I disagree with the policy as written is just with the notice length. We've decided on a one-year notice length to allow the fives cohort that's currently out there to enter the class next year. I believe this should be extended for two additional years to include parents who on reasonable reliance on our past practice, delay their child's entry into preschool, putting threes into twos and fours into threes. And that is why I will be voting against the policy tonight.
Thank you for that comment. Steve, any further comments or questions from trustees? Okay, I want to thank the Policy Committee for thorough research in terms of developing it and creating it and revising it. And now we're going to vote on adoption. Do I have a motion to adopt policy as written?
Second.
All in favor? Moving. All opposed?
No.
Okay, now we are moving on to item 9.2 for rescinding various policies. Any comments from the committee? Do I have a motion to accept rescinding of the policies that are proposed? 5695.1 and 5695.1 dash. All in favor? Okay, now moving on to the first read of the revised policy, 5152, admissions of non-resident students. Anything from the committee?
I mean, I can explain it. I mean, I can explain it. The original policy states that students who move out of district in their senior year after the second semester and have attended Irvington schools from ninth grade to 11th grade can attend the last semester free of charge. The rationale for changing it to students will be allowed to complete their entire 12th grade after only completing 11th grade in the district is to prioritize continuity for seniors. Students have no control over what happens in their lives and moving in senior year can be very disruptive to them. So that's the rationale for the amendment to this policy.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for that. All right, moving on to, I'm done with all the policies, right?
Right, yes.
All right, moving on to consent agenda. Questions or comments from trustees? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Good night. Dr. Rattusic, any comments?
No, other than we have appointed tonight Marielle Coffey, who will be serving as a lead replacement at Main Street School. So we welcome her to the district.
Wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to our next community comment period. Is there's no one left in this room with us? I'm assuming nobody has any comments. And you all have your own mics, so you know, if you want to say something, say it now. Our next public meeting will be here in the campus presentation room on Tuesday, November 4th at 7:30. Do you have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? All in favor? Aye.